Okay.
Melissa, my page is bent. I'm very upset about it.
To go. All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you for joining us this evening. Our friends from School Board have joined us for a joint work session for us to talk through some more elements of the budget and to go through a few things. Now, one of the pieces that a lot of time has been spent over the last week and maybe a little bit of change is talking about what the appropriate contribution from the city to the schools is. And I'll wait for David for just a minute because actually I was going to turn to you. So we're talking a little bit about the schools. Jody, come on in. Come on in. We're just now getting rolling. One of the pieces that we've all been kind of talking through is the appropriate state required contribution from the city to the schools. And as close as you can tell, it is very similar to what the level of funding that has been requested from Dr. Joyce. Is that accurate?
Straight off the DOE website, the only thing that can brush you off a little bit is the fact that the state funding House bill and the Senate bill got about $100,000 difference in the two. Of course, those were rejected by the governor and haven't advanced forward. So we're back to the DOE amount, which was that, right, 59, $5.9 million, which is essentially level funding from what the School Board asked for.
Council members, are there any other questions regarding the city's contribution to the schools, how that's formulated? I know there are a ton of formulas out there, and under this formula, it's X amount, and under that formula, it's this amount. But from what we can gather, the appropriate formula for us to use is the level funding for what's being requested. Any questions or comments regarding that?
I have an additional question. Adam, I first want to say, I know I sent you an email saying all this stuff, but thank you for getting all that information to us. I know that it may have seemed like we had more questions than had previously been asked in the past, but we're all under, you know, extreme circumstances and trying to make all of our budgets work. So it wasn't an attack, and I didn't want it to come across that way. We just generally had questions.
I didn't take it that way.
What?
I didn't take it that way.
Okay, but I mean, we're not trying to be, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Understood.
I'm just trying to, it's the auditor in me to ask questions and just want to know.
Sure.
Additionally, I want to make sure that we give you what we're supposed to give you.
Yes, ma'am.
And if it's more than what you asked for, then I want to make sure that we come do. We may not have it, but I want to make sure that you're getting what you need and what we're supposed to give you. Thank you for sending all the information that you did. I was looking at this Virginia Department of Educat, this spreadsheet thing that you sent where you calculated your stuff.
Yes.
And that was the 5.8 that I was looking at. But as I was looking at it, I was kind of reading the things, and I noticed that this arrow on the last page is the SOQ number, which is the standards of quality that I think we're supposed to make sure that we pay. So not everything on here that adds up to that 5.8 is, has that arrow which indicates that it's a SOQ requirement. So if I don't have my sheets, my, well, I do, but my laptop is dead. But if you add up those things that have the arrow beside it, that are indicated as being SOQs, it's that 5.158 on the first page, and then another 22,000 on the second page, which is roughly 5.2 if somebody wants to really do the math. It's less than the 5.8. I am still trying to figure out what we owe you to make sure that we give you what is required by the state.
Can I see what sheet you're referring to?
It's highlighted. Oh, you got another copy. So this arrow is the SOQ things, and so it's these two things that are totaling this 22, and then most of these things barring sales tax, which we don't have any of, and group life, I think, which, or no, this last one.
Right.
Remedial, whatever. So this number plus that additional 22. Do you have any insight as to those totals or what?
As to how we ended up here?
No, I know how you, I mean, you sent me.
I'm sorry.
Exactly what, no. So this seems to indicate that this SOQ is the standards of quality, which is what the code says that we have to give you, correct?
Right.
Well, it seems like this arrow indicates what those are on this spreadsheet that they give you to fill out. So it would be all the things that have an arrow. So that's a little less than 5.8. It's actually, I would have to do the math to get an exact, what's 5 million?
5,158, 677 plus 11, 999 plus 10, 152 equals, let me write this down, 1 million or 5,18828. And I'm just going to take the difference of what you guys are asking, just so everybody's clear. It's a difference of 697,073, which is a big number.
Want to ask?
Yeah. I just, and like I said, I'm just making sure.
For this?
We, yeah, yeah. Making sure I understand and make sure we're doing what we are supposed to do.
Okay.
Are you looking at the same page here?
Yeah, I believe so. That's for January. So those are for, you are correct about the SOQ funded accounts. But there are also incentive programs that school systems participate in. One of the biggest one is the at-risk funding. Of course, this money goes to serve our at-risk students. And you will notice, under that particular category, there is local match under the incentive programs and also under the lottery funded programs. So that is where some of your difference comes.
Okay.
Of the six, you said 697, something like that?
Whatever it was, yeah.
And another big part of it is K-12 primary class size reduction. That's where we keep the class size smaller in K through three. If we don't do that, we don't get that funding. So of course, we work very hard to do that. Another allotment of money is the Virginia Preschool Initiative. That's so that we can have preschool and what grade, ages of four-year-olds?
Three and four.
Yeah.
Three-year, three and four-year-olds. So we get funding to have that program, and there's also a small local match for that, too.
Okay.
And if you'll go down the various different categories, like this particular one is the governor's budget, and his proposal was a bonus. But I do, I mean, the other two, the House and the Senate, definitely went with a salary increase. We had discussed it. We really feel like it's going to go towards a salary increase as opposed to a bonus. But that's why there's always a local match for any type of, usually for salary type of things, and a bonus would be one, too. So there's a local match for that also. The technology, VPSA, that is a program that we use to upgrade our technology equipment for SOL web taste, testing, not tasting. There's a $36,000 match for that also. And one of the other big category is infrastructure and operations per pupil allocation. And if, you know, we don't participate in it, we don't get the $1 million for that particular fund line item. And based on this, there is a $206,000 match.
Okay.
So these things are going to fund important programs in the school system.
So where are you getting how much we have to match from each of those? Because maybe I was, maybe I was missing that part and I didn't.
Well, the match would be our part if we participate, okay, which would come from local funding.
Okay, so that whole number?
Yes, the 5.8, the whole number is the local.
No, each of those whole numbers. So for the IT or for the, the, I don't have my sheet, so I can't see, but, no, it's okay. So that entire amount you're saying is required
as a match.
Total from the state. Okay, I didn't see where it says that. I was just trying to make sure that I understood each of these.
That would only be if we choose to participate.
Yeah, because some of them have NA.
So your SOQs with the arrow are only the, is only money that goes towards the teachers we have to have to teach the kids that we have enrolled.
Okay.
Anything beyond that is up to us, but we can't be the only division that doesn't offer those things. So just in order to keep up with the rest of Virginia, which I don't know of a division that doesn't offer preschool and some of these other things, we have to, we have to tell the state, yes, we're going to participate in those programs. And then they say, well, in order us, in order for us to give you this much money, you've got to ante up this much money. So if we, if we ante up a certain amount for preschool, then they'll, they'll put in, you know, three times that much, but not until we ante up our part. It's like a local, it's not really even local match, it's a local effort. If we, if we say we're in for 30 grand, then they'll give us 200 grand.
But by we, we, you mean?
The school division.
The local government, yes.
Yes, the local government. So you guys are deciding on a number that we will match, like you said, this at-risk.
Well, it depends on.
Let me pick one that doesn't have an arrow that you were talking about.
Preschool.
Preschool.
So we allotted a certain number of slots for our three and four-year-old preschool kids. And the state says, okay, if you want to be able to offer preschool for the threes and fours, then you have to ante up a certain amount of money, and then we will go way beyond that amount, and I don't, I don't know exactly what it is.
133.
We, as the state, will go above and beyond that, and then you'll be, then you'll, you'll be able to fully fund your program. Your, your small amount and our large amount means that we can fully fund the preschool program, teachers, aides, buses, all those things, car seats, curriculum. Those are all the things that would go into the preschool program that is not required. Starting in July, we could say, no more preschool. And, you know, we would, we would recoup.
You take the fun.
We would recoup that money, the, whatever our part is. They would withdraw their part of the money, and we would go on our merry way. Meanwhile, we don't have preschool.
No, we need preschool, and we have an excellent preschool program. I know that there's a long list of people that want to get into.
And that's just one example.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's an easy one to look at. I guess I was just confused as to why, you know, if we're required to match that, why don't they have an arrow beside them? I mean, it would think that.
So Qs are only, we don't have to teach preschool kids.
Okay.
We don't have to, we don't even have to.
And I know they're optional.
We don't have to transport kids. We can, we can do away with all of our buses if we wanted to. That's not a requirement. The technology part that they throw in is not a requirement. But when, so it's just like the raise, their 3%, if it ends up being three, three plus or minus, we could say, we don't want that. So they won't, they'll take our money for the raise back to Richmond. We don't give a raise unless it's fully funded in the division, which we can't afford to do.
No.
So, so any of these programs that we leave laying on the table, they take back.
Now, that doesn't require a match, though, when you're talking about the 3% raise.
Right.
So, I mean, you're just saying if we got it and just said we don't want it, opposed to we don't have a match to it.
It would have, it would have a match.
Of what?
Well, our contribution would not, would be, not to the full seven, but our contribution would be, in order to get that three, we would have to, and I don't know the exact amount.
No, that would, okay, remember, there were three different budget documents, and the one that we proposed our budget on, for the most part, was the governor's budget. So I don't have the House or the Senate's in front of me to be able to tell you what that local match was.
So this one that we're looking at is the governor's?
Yes.
Okay, so you had two other options to choose from, and you guys decided on this one?
Most of the divisions in the state chose the governor's budget.
Well, I mean, it's up to you to decide, which, I didn't look. I mean, it's your choice to decide whichever one you want to do.
That's the budget that he created, or his office created, and then the House and Senate went off that budget and said, let's do this with this fund and this.
Okay.
So we, we decided to try to stay in the middle.
Okay.
Just like every other division, and then, but all that's moot now, because they're going to start over.
Well, yeah, so we have no idea what.
Actually, likely, no matter how much work we do tonight, that, this budget's going to have to be amended in some fashion.
Yes.
Fortunately.
Yes.
Additional question about the 5.8 million?
Well, I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
I believe that if the local match for the 3%, as Mrs. Foster was asking about, would have increased the 5.8 by some number, but I'm not sure what it would have been.
So if, if the state says they're providing that 3% raise, then we have to provide an amount over the 3% as a match for their, what they're putting out as a part of their budget, then the locality has to pay a percentage?
Is based on your local composite index. So they say that they can pay whatever, 100 minus 16.58%, the state's going to pay that much. So that's how much they give us to fund that 3%. And then they say your local government will, can pay the other 16.58% of whatever the amount is that they figure to give a 3% raise.
We just have to have some money that says we're good, that we're, that we're going to participate in this.
So then out of the, there, let's say they say 3%, but they have no intention of giving the 3%, they're requiring that 3% to state employees, just to make it easy, they say, we require a 3% raise, but we're only going to cover 2%. Your locality has to come back and pay that 1%, and we also want another 4% to get to the seven. So, so some of that three is going to be our responsibility on top of the four.
Yes, because you have a required local match.
Yeah, that's.
For that particular item.
A lot like the Virginia preschool is not anywhere near the amount that we'll end up getting, but we have to have some money to say, you know, we have to ante up a little bit, to say that we're good.
To get the state money, we have to participate, and to participate, there's some local funds.
Right. The good news is that the state of Virginia is looking at how they can revamp the entire school funding formula.
Well, I think it's confusing because there are so many different, you could look at SOQ, you could look at LCI, you could look at, at different pieces and come up with a different number every time. And that just, that makes it challenging for all of us to try to figure that out. So that's always a hard one.
I just want to make a comment. The biggest thing we missed out on, just getting together, having a work session. I think if we had done that, I think we'd be much further ahead, oh, sorry, the mic, much further ahead, and that would have worked out much better. And it was, it's my understanding that we had that opportunity to be there, and I'm not quite sure what happened, but I would have loved to have been there to, just to, you know, participate, you know, learn. You know, and I think we could have just sat down together and, you know, learned from each other and, and, and I think that would have been much better than what's going on right now, to be honest. So that's just my, just my two cents.
I think, I think all that becomes, that'll be one of the results, I feel like, from our meeting on Thursday. I think there'll be a lot more, there will be a lot more of these two bodies meeting together, at least twice a year. That would be my goal.
I'll echo what Bobby said. I do, I do hate that we're at the 11th hour doing this, and we are on the same team. This is, what's good for you guys is good for us and vice versa, and this is a unique situation, a unique time where we are, there is no better investment than we can make in our schools. I don't think anyone up here thinks that. Given that this is, this has been some challenging financial times, we are turning over every, every rock and cranny and asking questions, but I don't want that to be interpreted as that we don't care about our schools or anything like that. And we're so appreciative of you guys coming and having this conversation, and, I mean, I think we all look forward to working with you for hopefully many years to come, and I do hope that, like you said, from this, that we have a renewed sense of, hey, we need to come down, come to the table, talk about these things, and look big picture together. So I know that this has been kind of a frustrating process, but I do appreciate your guys' willingness to be here twice and help us navigate this. So I did just want to appreciate that. For me, it was never a question, I, I don't know if there's misunderstanding, there was, it was never a question of if there was a state obligation. I think we all knew that. It was, what is that? And if, is there any differences in that? Because this being a unique year, maybe this year, we had to look at something else to do with that. I think that was the main question, certainly not that there was no obligation whatsoever. But I do appreciate your patience and for working with us and answering these questions, and that's really all I have.
Are there any other questions regarding the, the amount for the city's contribution?
Well, coming from the School Board perspective, what I know is, you know, we're fairly limited. We, we do not, as a council, do line item budgeting for you. That's why you have these elected officials, and that's why you're there. And there's a real clear line as to what we're able to do versus what you've been elected to capably handle. So just so you know, I, I understand that you allocated the money, and then it's, you guys have to use your best judgment because you're in the schools and you see it close hand. I get that, and I totally respect that process. Again, I think we all just are at the point where we know that, you know, you guys do still have a substantial amount of money in the wings. And what I would ask, and it would probably need updating, but everyone is new, you know, on the School Board as well as you're new. When I was elected to School Board, the first thing we did is we had an analysis done of every single thing that the school owned, everything. You name it, it was evaluated. You've been here, you know. And I don't know if you all have had a chance to see that. It, I'm sure that if you look at it, there's been a lot of items that have been ticked off. I would still say I would go back to it because it did give us an idea of how to prioritize based on a full assessment of what, what we had available to us. Again, it would probably need some updating, but I still found it a really good tool. And a part of our work session, one of the things I'd like to hammer out together is, with that set aside money, where, where are those goals? Is it, is it the track, you know, is it something internally in the classroom? So that'd be one thing that in the future, in those conversations, that I'd really like us to work on together because we don't want, we don't want to hear that there's a boiler after we've, you know, completed a track or whatever the case is. Like, we need to go back to that. And just as, you know, I, I feel like I'd still be remiss if I didn't say, even though it is not our, you know, not our place to necessarily line item your budget, I still am not thrilled with providing school supplies for everybody, and I would not have voted for that because not only are we supplying supplies for people that can't afford it, we're also supplying it for people that can't afford it. So the Radford Bobcat way has always been that we've taken care of each other, and I know we never had a problem with supplies when I was there, and if there ever was something that was low, the teachers would let us know, and we provided it because that's how we are as a community. So I'm, I'm still, you know, where we're sitting, when we look at taxes and raises that we might have to make in that, I think about my mom who lives here, who's a senior citizen, who I'm taking money potentially from her to pay for something else. And so I don't necessarily want her to pay for school supplies for, you know, a child that can provide it for themselves when she's limited to. So I don't love that part, but I do, again, I, I understand our role, and I respect that. You guys have a tough job, and I appreciate all that you're doing. It is, is our obligation to drill down, and so don't take it personally. It is what we are required to do, and I, we will continue to do that. But we also want to know, you know, how, how to better meet your needs overall, and it may not just be financial. So again, I try to see that document. If you haven't, I don't, have you guys had a chance to see it?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Yes. So that's, that's a really good one to go back to, but that's all I have. And I appreciate everyone's hard work, and we, I know, coming from School Board, I can't thank you all enough for all that you do. School Board, I know, I've, I've sat in those chairs. I know it's tough. So again, I just looking forward to more collaboration.
So I, I wanted to reiterate that point as well, that I think us working together on the capital improvement plan was why that agreement was put into place, so that there would be money to take care of issues as we came along. And, and just so we're all on the same page, there've been, you know, emergent things that have come about that have kind of taken everybody by surprise. So I think we can eliminate some of that and at least have some things that we know 2024, we're going to handle X, Y, and Z. 2025, these three things or whatever it happens to look like. I did have one question, and, but before I get to mine, I wanted to turn back to you, Kelly. You, I didn't know if you had any more questions about the 5.8 million. Are you good, or do you have more questions on that number?
That was the only question that I had so far. I just noticed the arrow and was asking about the arrow. And I ask my questions from individuals on council. I got with our lawyer, I got with our city council. We had 50 zillion emails back and forth this week. I sent you guys all of the research I have found, so I'm good. I appreciate everybody's effort.
Since we are talking about a couple different numbers, and Carrie, I don't know if you can help us with this. What gets us from 5.8 million to 6.059?
Okay, so in Air Fund Five, which is called our Capital Projects Fund, we always ask for 220,000, and that we want it to be taken out of the carryforward reserve fund, and we use that for projects that come up that we haven't necessarily budgeted within our regular budget, like if a boiler did break, and I hate to keep using that particular term, but it could be a compressor or whatever else piece of equipment.
Some wood the boiler does fine, so we keep saying it.
Yeah, we better be knocking on one. So that we could go ahead and take care of that particular project up to that. I thought 220 was a good number to use.
So some of that is capital improvement money as well?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
It's not earmarked currently. It's just, it's a part of the reserve.
It's in the Fund Five, but it's.
It was set aside as a separate amount in the budget you presented, so we did have that. It's not earmarked for a specific project, but it's set aside for capital improvement in general, in addition to any additional monies that are considered carryforward or the other component of the capital improvement fund, correct?
I think that, yeah.
Okay. I, I'm trying to just get everybody on the same page. One other thing that I do think would help us, and this is something to consider moving forward, is to go on and put a budgeted amount for the 400,000 rather than saying it's going to come out of carryforward. I always felt like that, that felt like it was saying, we'll pay this if we have the overage that's there. But we know we're going to pay it regardless. So I think it'd be good if there was a way in the budget to put it as a debt service line item that that clarifies a little more, and it, it makes that carryforward number or capital improvement number a little cleaner, that that's specifically what we do have for capital improvements. That would just help me as we're looking through some of this and go from there. But I'm very appreciative of everything you all have done. You know, I know the level of funding kind of keeps us where we're okay with everything. We can figure out some of these capital projects. I, I love what you've brought us in terms of talking about the track and the auditorium. Those are long overdue and things that have been talked about for quite some time. Hopefully, whatever else is going on at the high school or any of the other locations that need some additional work, we can figure that out. So in the next two or three years, we have our, our checklist to go through that, and that'll be good for everybody because they'll know, hey, we're coming with some improvements to the main hallway of the high school in 2026, or whatever that looks like. And I think that helps keep everybody informed. But I really do appreciate everybody's work in trying to make sure they fully understand everything. Before we continue at this point, School Board, do you have any questions or comments that you want to make regarding this?
I would just say thank you for working with us. Judges aren't new to EBS, but they can be. Don't have no conflict. That's the body of the policy that's in marriage. Or that these two bodies can get together and work correctly and openly. Everyone around us is going to benefit from it. Love today, but.
I was just going to add, the one other thing that I, I would like to see is, I'm not a fan of a slush fund. You know, having a 200,000 not earmarked and we have a million not earmarked. So what I would like to discuss is, especially when we have that large kitty there, which is to use as things come up, instead of just knowing that we're continuously adding to that fairly large number. I don't think we ever carried anything close to that when I was on School Board because there's so much to address. There's always things to address. So I would even like to see if there's 200,000 added over for projects, and that's line item on top of what's set aside, what, what your plans are with that. I would like to see that more as project oriented when you already have a million setting aside. I'd like us to talk about, these are things that we're going to use that money for, as well as to develop a plan for the 1.3 million. So just, like I said, I'm just not a fan of like, just here, we don't know what we're spending it on yet. Something probably will come up, and we have a million dollars set aside for that, but we would like another 200-plus. I, I'm not, I don't love that. So just going forward, I think that's a discussion that we all need to have a little bit closer because that's hard. because that's hard for us to explain to our taxpayers.
May I make something a little bit, explain something, please?
Please.
Okay, so you, we were, you talked about the one point three. The two hundred and twenty is going to be drawn out of that account. It's not additional mu- it's not, um, that's where the money would come from. And so when we have you go ahead and appropriate, if we had a, a piece of equipment go down and we needed to go ahead and get it put in, it wouldn't require an additional appropriation of whatever that amount was out of that fund. And that, and so what I would do is, once it's been paid for, I send an invoice to, uh, the finance department, and then they in turn reimburse me from that fund.
So you would, you're, you're only asking for that two hundred, so you don't have to come to us?
Right, that one point three is still under your control.
Right.
This two hundred thousand dollars is coming from the one point three million, so that if tomorrow, I'm not going to say a boiler goes down.
Right.
Let's say a, let's say a bus goes down, and we need a new bus for whatever reason. Then we don't have to come back and say, from the one point three million, even though we just met last night, we need another two hundred thousand dollars because we need to spend it on X, Y, and Z. So, so we get, I'm sorry, we get to the six million using the one point three million that you already control.
If I'm understanding correctly, of the one point three million, it's capped at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you guys can use at your discretion without having to come back to us. Is that, would that be correct?
Can you appropriate it on a yearly basis? Yes, but communication is made to, and, and to the finance department as to what we do, I mean, spend it on. We can always tell you before that we start spending the two twenty that we're going to buy a new compressor for Bell Heath because it's broke.
Right.
And it costs this much. We could do that.
Well, and usually there is a communication between the superintendent and the city manager to say, hey, this is what we're experiencing, and then the city manager sends a message to us to say, okay, it looks like we're going to have a large expenditure at Bell Heath or at the high school or whatever. So that's part of it. So I just want to be clear, because now I'm confused again, and I apologize. So what gets us then from five point eight to six million fifty-nine thousand if the two twenty is coming out of the one point three that we already have?
Well, I'm going to state the way I view it.
Uh-huh.
Okay, is every year, I thought you all were supposed to appropriate the money that we needed, we were too spent, and we have to stay within that range.
Okay.
So that's why we ask you to appropriate the two twenty also.
I just wanted to make sure, so that's not, that two twenty might be part of one point three from a bookkeeping standpoint, but there is some new money that, that's funding that, that the one point three that would have been saved from not spending money over the last year or whatever, would be its own separate piece in some ways, that we get two six million and fifty-nine thousand dollars from the additional monies that are appropriated for capital improvement. Is that accurate?
So when we give you the two twenty, the new capital amount is going to be one point one?
Correct.
Yes.
Based on the balance that we have now.
Does that make better sense? Okay, is that?
Yes.
So they're, they're going to go down because we're giving them some, so they don't have to ask for it all the time?
Right.
We could not do that. It would still be in the capital fund. They just have to come and ask for us when the boiler goes down.
So talk about that, because I don't think everyone kind of understands the reason that we have, eh, eh, as a city, allowed that kitty is for repairs. So when we talk about appropriating it, so the whole reason it's there is so you don't come and ask us every single time. So, but when you decide to do something, a, a project, what is your process when it comes out of that, that one point three?
We have to come and ask you.
Yes, we would increase the budget by whatever we might need to do that particular project. And it, it would normally be taken out of the balance of the one point three.
Appropriation, like the big one that was, maybe when you were on count of-
The high school roof.
Yes, like the roofs.
They have to come and ask for it, and then you appropriate the money.
Okay.
All right, we've talked this to depth. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
I hope it's answered the questions for the citizens that may be out there watching or just wondering. That we are looking at level funding for this year from the city to the schools of six million fifty-nine thousand and twenty-eight dollars. So that's kind of what we've figured out is the appropriate amount that needs to, to come over, um, and that's what's in our city budget. That's based on what you sent us earlier today. Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes?
As a teacher, you can talk about the supply. First of all, I don't know the price of supplies lately, but- As a teacher, I can tell you that when families were going to supply shopping before school started, so was I. I was banking up notebooks and compositionals and expo markers and all the things for those kids who were not prepared. So in, in some sense, I think sometimes our teachers shoulder some of that cost because teachers aren't going to let those kids go.
And I'm, I'm not debating that. I know, I go to Walmart and look at, uh, you know, they have specials when it's school time, thirty-three cents, I think last year for, yeah, well, I bought some. So you can get good deals at the beginning of this, you know, before, right. So all I'm saying is, for families that can afford it, and there are families that can, I, I just have a philosophical issue with that being a part of a tax the community has to pay for families that can afford it. Phil, this is more of a philosophical issue for me, opposed to how large the line item is, because now we're, we're going to supply it for the kids that can and the kids that can't. So maybe I'd feel different if we said, you know, here's, here's our percentage of, of free and reduced lunch. Children who might need it, here, give me, give me something that would show a number that makes sense, but just supplying it for everyone does not. And I know, having three kids that went through the school, um, when something ran low, there'd be an email that went out, and people provided it. And, and maybe sometimes they didn't, but in my experience, we, we were able to cover what was needed. And teachers will always, they're, they're wonderful. They always are donating. They're, I, I know this. We, we have wonderful people that work in our school system, and there's always more that needs done. I get that. I, our first responders tell us that, too. So I'm just saying, my, my philosophical issue is supplying it for everybody. The kids that can and the kids that can't. I don't care if it's three dollars for twelve pencils or eight dollars. The families that can, we should not be taking money from people who maybe can't afford it because I'm taking it out of someone else's pocket to pay for someone else's child, and they have the money in their pocket to go buy it. Just a philosophical issue I have with that, and that's it. I want all of our kids to have supplies, and I do think we need to make sure they have it one way or the other. Just don't love this method. But again, coming from the school board, that's not, you guys have to decide that. That's why you guys have been elected, to be good stewards of that. You've decided it's a good idea to cover school supplies for everybody, so that's that. I just differ, and I just feel like I needed to put that on the record for our families who are struggling to make ends meet. We want you to have your pencils. Families that, um, perhaps can't afford it, find another way to contribute to the school system because there's other things that are needed that maybe we're not going to be able to touch because we're spending the money this way, but that's it. That's all I have.
Dr. Joyce, thank you. Thank you to our school board for all that you have done. We appreciate working together. I'm sure we're going to have a lot more opportunity to talk through things, uh, in the coming months. One thing I will mention, and, and this is a little bit off topic, but not really. We liked doing the January event celebrating our state champions so well. We would love to try to do that twice a year. So maybe May and December, so that we don't miss the graduates who'll be leaving this year. May is coming up, so, uh, whether it's May or June, whatever works out better. We wanted to obviously do it before graduation, if that's possible. We'll just put that bug out there that if it's possible, we would love to have another get-together here, maybe at, at our May meeting or the first June meeting, whatever works out well, so that we can celebrate those spring champions and appreciate all the work that they've done. So I just wanted to mention that. We'll go on and adjourn for twenty minutes and then come back at seven with our regular session. Thank you.
Thank you.